Half, half my screen anyhow.
And you're on the hall?
Why do we have two of them?
It's mine.
Is yours going with you? Do we have two?
We got two going.
Why? Why do we need two?
Cause he says his is separate.
Okay, good morning.
They got to fight. They're attacking me from the middle.
Thank you, David.
Good morning, everyone. I'm on the, the, Microsoft Teams meeting, the same meeting that Roger is on.
Yep. How, how are you feeling, Doug?
Pardon me?
How are you feeling?
Um, I'm fine. I just have some, what I would call mild, like a mild cold, um, little congestion, runny nose. It's kind of frustrating. I'm just sitting in my basement. Roger, when did you test positive?
Friday, uh, Saturday, I mean.
That's the same with me. I suppose I give it to you there. Sorry.
Hard to tell.
Well, I'm gonna mute myself again.
Alright.
That's what the president did all the time. I don't know if that's good, Doug.
Well, I, I will answer any questions, um, however you wanna hand, however you wanna do it. So.
Missing an action. Couple of there, the blue one. Oh, it's the one from her can get her up to the.
He's bad down here. He's locked up. Did he yesterday? About Sunday and you'll see. I'm outside with him, so they're coming.
Yeah.
Thursday. Saltwater. Now, as I've seen, everyone's ripped up. She might want to work me on the ground. You fight off. Morning, sir.
Rain.
Yeah.
Did it get like six or seven inches above the east of Daniel? Does Eric not have one?
They got farther east. They got like five to six inches over Mason City, Northwood. I know Jim's aunt, that's two miles north of Ditch River Bottom. On gravel road, it's a little bit less than two miles. She says that she got found him.
USB.
That's what he.
Are you hit here, hit there? Why are you pretty much doing that?
Building one six.
You're one six? Yeah, you Garrett one, Scotty. Ask the Scotty guy. I have total two seven, two eight, and Irving seven, two seven, that's fine.
Hey, it is eight o'clock. We'll call the meeting order. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the federal republic in which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, uh, first thing we have is, uh, we need the motion to approve the agenda, the minutes dated.
Oh, yeah. Is there any public discussion?
Yes.
Stairway, maybe at the slough bales and we sent out letters, um, explaining it all. Well, we have found someone that has abuse this and, so I guess I'm, I'm in the process right now of driving the company out and the other ones to verify. But I'm just wondering, I wanna get the guidance from you because you approve them. Once, once I find out and have everything else decided, um, what would you like me to do? On the agenda and bring a letter or? And deny it for twenty-two?
Suppose.
You know, I, that's what the letter said. I mean, if they denied it, they will lose, um, all their rights for it, so. I just wanna make you aware of that and.
Okay.
How to get a couple of your targets on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we got secondary road foreman here. Doug's on the, on line. Let's see if you need anything from him, but. Have anything? Wanna talk about or anything?
Blade throws and everything are. They're improved a little bit.
Yeah.
It needs more moisture, but it's, it definitely helped.
Yeah, that Irvington road, did he start that? Did he do this morning or yesterday afternoon?
From town out there?
Yeah.
I don't know if he got to me yesterday or if he's doing it today. I'm not sure.
Well, they say it was done when they come to town this morning.
Melanie, but he's just doing it today then.
And it's, there was no dust behind me.
Yeah. Good.
He's got a little obstacle course on every building site. He's gotta raise it, go over, drop it because he has sap.
Yeah, went out hard on him yesterday morning. We're in sleep.
Got all the moors running all the time?
He's running.
All right.
We've had some issues. Breakdowns, but doing old, it doesn't matter. Their jobs don't break, so. Yeah, we're doing our best to.
Scott, you know, if you've been on river road between the two block tops by any chance recently?
From?
Like past golf course going down and following that through?
Yeah, he played in that yesterday.
Okay, cause I was on that this last week and it was.
Yeah.
Snyder's and Villa Grove, that's going northeast side. Maybe that two and a half inches in Murray and there in the tube in the creek running, yeah. Didn't quite get that far.
Just provided, it's, yeah. Just didn't get that one far.
When they gonna start the crashing down the pits?
David, are you asking for road gravel or are you asking for asphalt?
Road gravel.
Uh, we've not been notified for the, road gravel, so, um.
You're gonna do that north pit this year, right?
It's McGuire and Rockler. Yes.
Okay. You gonna go out farther or just keep digging down the bottom like you did last time?
It will be both. Uh, we'll, we'll continue to try to get that, uh, bottom, get it, get it to the clay and, and then what we need to do, uh, to keep on going west.
Doug, um, Matt's here and when you find out, could you let me or Matt know? That way he can go out and chop the corn before they just tear it out with bulldozer?
I, I will talk with Matt. Yeah, I'll make a note of that.
Okay, like I said, he's in the crowd right here, so he, he's asking to ask you that.
Yeah, good morning, Matt. I'll get ahold of you.
Anything else for the road foreman? Do you guys have anything else for us? Doug, you have anything else?
No, I do not. Um, uh, I think Brian is there. Bill Marin, he also, uh, tested positive, so he and I and Roger, I don't know if we, we got together last week at the same time or, or what, but, uh, we, we, it's fortunate that we have good, good, uh, assistant foreman. Um, last week we had, um, we had, uh, uh, help me, Scott. I'm sorry. Losing my mind here.
Alex.
Uh, Alex, thank you. Alex was taking care of the road department and we got Brian taking care of it this week. So thank you, Brian. Thank you, Alex, for all your work. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we'll, uh, move on. Thanks, guys. You guys are all here for the summit. No, you're not here for public discussion, I don't think, are you? Alright, uh, we need a motion to approve, uh, the agenda, the minutes. August, uh, second.
So moved.
Motion by supervisor Casey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Stecker. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, uh, medical, lead medical exam, examiner.
Good. I'd like to present the request that Dr. Yelly be appointed, reappointed actually, as the lead medical examiner and that our other family practice physicians be appointed as the assistant medical examiners. Those would be Dr. Michael Lambie, Dr. Brad Owen, Dr. Josiah Brinkley, Dr. Rachel Ben Tiger, Dr. Christian Brenberg, and Dr. Yelly.
Okay, we need a motion to appoint, uh, Dr. Yelly as the lead examiner and all the other doctors of the clinic, uh, as assistants.
I'll make that motion, Jack.
Motion by Roger. They're seconded by supervisor Stecker. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Alright, uh, we got the sheriff here. Looks like we're gonna have a couple of jailers.
Yes, Lord. As you guys are probably all aware, we've been searching for jail staff for a little over a year now. For your face, I'm sorry.
I've been exhausted.
We've been searching for jail staff for a little over a year now. Get back to full staff. Uh, we had a jailer resign last November, I believe it was. And then another one here about six weeks ago, six to eight weeks ago. So we're down to two jail staff and that's what we're doing this morning is just trying to replace the two staff that we lost. We've offered the positions to a young lady here in Algonah, uh, Tammy Dills. She currently is a CNA and medical distributor at, uh, one of the local nursing homes, uh, living right here in town. And we're gonna offer the other position to, uh, Jamie Baker. Jamie is currently residing in Imisburg and is looking to, uh, move over to this area after it gets established here a little bit, so. These are the two, uh, that went through our interview process. We, I think, did we have nine or ten applications? Ten applications and we went through, um, the good news is we were able to hire a female. We need to keep that staff, uh, stability there so that when we always have a female on staff to, to house female inmates. So that's what we're looking for today is approval to get them both on board. Um, because of our shift rotation, we're gonna start one of them on the fifteenth and one on the twenty-second. Remember, we do seven on, seven off the jail staff, so. Your approval, we're gonna get started. They'll both go through training in-house. We've, uh, developed a new FTO training program for jail staff where they'll go through a training and then we have to send them down to, you have to be, uh, within this first year to get the forty hour train. Not a half gallon at, uh, Des Moines, so.
Okay, there a motion to approve the hiring of the two new jailers? Motion by supervisor Casey to approve. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by supervisor Los. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Holmes, looks like we're gonna talk about, uh, drainage attorney's liability after DD seven.
Yes, um, this was sprung at me a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'd like to preface my, uh, comments to, uh, preface my comments, uh, uh, in regards to this, that I don't practice, uh, in that area. I've never, um, practiced in attorney, um, malpractice, lawyer malpractice actions. Um, so, you know, looking at this, also the fact that it's, uh, involving drainage, um, you know, I think it's probably best for an official opinion to be asked of an attorney who has, um, experience in that and also drainage law, uh, so that, uh, more thorough opinion, but I can give you a kind of the, uh, I think a summary of what happens in situations like this and then make some comments regarding the actions, so. The, uh, first of all, you know, you can't, every attorney in Iowa practicing law is required to carry malpractice insurance. Okay, that's, that's the backup, uh, for if something happens and there was a mistake made so that they have the ability to, uh, seek, uh, insurance, uh, money for, uh, redress of the damages or rectifying the damages. So in looking at it, um, for a legal malpractice action, you have to file suit against that attorney for malpractice. Uh, there are four elements to, um, a malpractice action. The existence of an attorney-client relationship giving rise to duty is the first element. That element obviously is satisfied in most situations. I don't know. I also wanna say that, you know, all I have is the ruling. I don't know all the conversations that went on between you and Mr. Edie or Ivy. At the beginning of this, uh, I don't know how much involvement he had in this to begin with. Because I think that's what you initially had indicated you're limiting the analysis to is, is attorney, I agree, is that correct? If I'm mistaken?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, you know, I presume that there is that, uh, attorney-client relationship. I assume you hired him and, uh, most of the time that's, that's an element that's easily meant. And then the second element is that the attorney either by an act or failure to act violated or breached that duty. Uh, in looking at the ruling, which is all that I have as far as information, um, you know, there's, there's mention of this, uh, September twentieth, um, letter from Mr. Ivy to, uh, Tom Anton, uh, that had a clerical error in it as far as four sixty-nine point one four nine, which is the wrong code section. But, I'm not sure if that is, uh, you know, first block in, in what the court says. It appears to be a factor in the consideration. Uh, but then it goes on, the judge went on and said notice after the fact can hardly be considered notice at all. So that was after the hiring of the, uh, or the contracting of the label for the, uh, ditch cleanup. It also, also references the letter of October fifteenth, uh, that, uh, uh, Mr. Jark signed, uh, to Tom, uh, as being in another factor. So the question comes down to, you know, whether or not there was that breach. The third element of, an action in malpractice, malpractice would be that the attorney's breach of duty approximately caused injury to the client. And then the fourth is that the client sustained actual injury, loss, or damage. In my analysis here, looking at it from the standpoint of damage, the damage that was caused, who actually received or was the, um, recipient of that damage? The trustees? Or the landowners?
The drainage district.
Which is then assessed out to the landowners that are benefited from the cleanup. Okay, so, another issue that I had in analyzing this is, you know, who has the actual claim or cause of action?
Well, we're at, we're at these trustees for the drainage districts, so.
Correct. Correct. And so your job is then to assess those out to the landowners that are affected by the drainage shit that they, that they, their land sits in. So, you know, in looking at from the standpoint of my suggestion or analysis, it probably would be best to, um, have an attorney who is experienced in legal malpractice litigation and, uh, actions to analyze whether or not there's a claim.
You have any suggestions?
Well, if you want, the first place I would start with, well, I guess, and also I'm going to say that these actions are pretty time-intensive and, and, uh, the staff required to do that is, is quite large, so. You know, even if I could do it, I don't have enough, um, manpower staff to, to handle that type of an action, so they're usually in larger firms. But you hired, uh, this Goodwin recently on another matter. Uh, I can find out and talk to him if he's someone who's capable of doing that to me.
Okay.
Otherwise, there's, there are firms that do this just primarily.
Investigate, uh.
You have five years as far as statute limitation, so.
I'd rather do it sooner.
Yeah, sooner than later. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, okay, I guess the board's shaking their heads if you wanna check out a.
Yeah, I'll call him after I did that here and, and find out. He asked me another question that, uh, I need to get back to him on so I can ask him.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Guess you want a motion or what do you want to hear?
Um, well.
We don't need a decision today. I can say that estimation and bring it up to, I mean, more than likely next week.
If, if, yes, if we add a motion, I'd just say, you know, have county attorney Todd Holmes, uh, in that, uh, look into a suitable attorney to handle the liability of DD seven ruling. I'd make a motion that we just, we're, we, uh, having our county attorney Todd Holmes, uh, investigate, uh, a suitable attorney to handle the liability, uh, after the DD seven ruling.
I'll second it.
Second by supervisor Becker. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay. So we have it on record that we're directed you to, uh, look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
I gotta have the next two.
Yeah, okay, uh.
Well, I, I, I think this was one that you put on after our discussions, uh, on the storage space on Philip Street Building.
Yep.
Yeah, so I put that on the agenda, obviously. Had some questions in regards to that because it was briefly discussed two weeks ago in here and then as soon as we, we were told that Algonah was granted permission to use the building and, one, the first time it came up, I, I believe I mentioned that we had, I thought we should have a twenty-eighty with them as far as liabilities, make sure all that stuff was covered. So, Roger, do we have anything in writing for that?
No.
Okay, so, what's the timeframe that they're allowed to use this building for and square footage?
We told them one year.
Recurring or on its own?
On its own. One year and they're looking for a place to store it. Right now they're kinda having an emergency.
So, we give free storage to the city of Algonah. Who else is able to have free storage there?
I think they were offering to pay, weren't they, Roger?
Well, the other thing, Kyle, we're trying to work with them on the ambulance service and if we, if you don't wanna work with them, how are we gonna, uh, work with them when we go to their buildings that they're gonna donate to the ambulance service?
I'm, I'm not saying we can't be a team player, but I'm saying we gotta protect ourselves while we're doing it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
One of the things that I looked at is, you know, putting it in writing because I, I, I think that's a key looking at the fact that, you know, this could go on for quite some time. And setting it out as far as, uh, into the future because, you know, if you're looking at something, uh, being a consistent thing, uh, you know, members of the board, uh, members of city council, all of those change periodically. And so at least you have, uh, it in writing as to what the, uh, the agreement is, you know, or if, if it's limited to this or those types of things spelled out. So that way you can point to a writing that says, yeah, this is, this is what we agreed to. So that it isn't, you know, next year a few more, uh, year after that, a little bit more, and then pretty soon you have, you know, more space than what the board was anticipating using. Um, I just, uh, my suggestion would be that, uh, having some sort of a, a written document that you can point to, uh, because, you know, fifteen years down the road, uh, I would think that more likely the, both sides of the fence are going to have different, uh, uh, people on and on the, uh, the government.
What is, what is it they're wanting to store, Roger?
Uh, Christmas decorations, hay rack.
On a hay rack?
It's on, yeah, they're on wheels.
And there, that south end of the buildings, that all we have is the alleyway. They haven't tore any of the, the sides out yet, have they?
They were gonna put it in that, that east, uh, west part, you know, the old, uh, office, original office.
Oh.
On the west side.
Oh, and that little, is that, is there a way to get a hay rack in there? There's a door.
Yeah, there's a garage door.
Is it there already?
Not that I know of.
So it just be, so, hey, Ted, could you write up, uh, some little, some, what, little.
Yeah, to give you the details as far as what you're, you're wanting is.
Selling storage of a hay rack with Christmas decorations in the, in the west, in the, in that west door, west storage space for, uh, for one year?
Roger, is it one or two racks?
Uh, I think it was two, but it's, yeah, they said for a year.
We'll put racks, uh, put racks, storage, Christmas decorations on.
Mo- mobile racks.
And just say the green will be for one year?
Yeah.
And be no, right, any compensation for it or just? No.
We didn't, we didn't talk about it.
Uh, that brick area on the southwest corner, southwest side of the building, there's a little up door there. That's the original U B.
The west, it's the west door.
The west, no, no. Is it?
There's a corner, is that little building that's.
The door in the south.
Or on the north side, if I remember right.
On the south side.
On the south side.
And, yeah.
North to either.
There's one on the west side and the south.
West and, yeah, I was gonna say, that's just on the west side. No, there's, the west is just one.
There's small, there's a small door there.
But anyways, that brick area on the southwest corner of the building.
Southwest.
Yeah.
They won't have access unless we let them in.
Right. Okay, well, can you have that for next week?
Sure.
Okay, put that on the agenda for next week then. Discussion, decision, move of, uh, storage area for Sydney, Algonah. Alright, well, we'll put that on for next week and from there, I guess. Okay. Hey, so just let them then show that the attorney's gonna write up a agreement. Okay, discussion, decision regarding resolution summit carbon agricultural mitigation.
This was tabled from two weeks ago. I had a discussion with the board on this resolution. Presented the resolution that was drafted from Boca Hana County. And I think Mr. Casey had indicated that there's another one out there that I was contacting Matt Dornbeer who's here, and I spoke with him yesterday. And he definitely sort of mentioned regarding attorneys involved in the issue over there in Shelby County. And it's that resolution that I think Mr. Casey, you were saying was probably going to be better than the Boca Hana's one, so we tabled it. Whatever is, uh, whatever's going on there hasn't been concluded yet, so that resolution is not completed. So the, the question would be whether or not you wanna act to get one in place. And amend it later or wait until that, that resolution is completed.
Yeah, that pretty much summed it up. Steve Kankel's the board there at Shelby County, and he's kind of been trying to understand there and there was a chapter paragraph. He had objection with, so they took it back to an attorney, Paul Blackburn, and placed it. And this had a couple of weeks, but maybe back on that. I need to implement that in Shelby County. I am going to consider the pipeline as our recommendation from people of the city by showing us to wait. Try to ask you guys to Shelby County.
Do you see a problem to have a table in again for a couple of weeks?
No, I don't. At least we'll find out more about the Shelby County resolution. If, you know, in a couple of weeks it's not presented or there isn't one to, to use. We could also at that time then adopt the resolution that's, that's prepared and then amend it later. I don't know what this, the timeline is for this pipeline.
Well, they can't do anything with the pipeline, I U B will be released in February, so.
But next year.
Yes. Look at, wait till February. I'm gonna do something prior to that. I can keep in contact with Todd who gave him on status in Shelby County, what's going on there.
So I, yeah, I don't see any problem with tabling it for two weeks, see what happens there. Hope for whatever happens in Shelby County.
So the carbon company can't figure out what they wanna do, put that into the U B until they.
Yeah, they can't really achieve anything until February. That point five, you know, ground construction permit and then it would be locally, all they can do now is
Okay, we'll put that on for two weeks now again. And Todd, I told him to put that on for next week, about that DD seven again.
Yeah, I will, I'll reach out to that attorney. You know, I, I just don't have enough information to make any, any decision one way or the other.
So if you do have something, we'll, we'll make a decision next week. I guess we'll just make a decision.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Todd.
There is a public meeting on the ninth. As soon, if any of you guys would like to sit in on that, especially updates. Just gotta contact information. All along. Updates on what we've told.
No, just to, just to be, no actions taken. I had it put on for two weeks. We'll take it up in two weeks again then. See if any of that other agreement has been settled and adopt that. All right, well, we have to wait till nine o'clock for the care connections thing, so I guess we'll take a break, take a little break.
Nine forty-five is discussion gravel.
There you go, Pearl, said next week.
Get back on next week then.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, bud.
All right, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, I had none yourself, sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, so if I go to the chair, desktop window. Okay, is the official report of county highway engineer up there right now, Derek?
Yeah. So you clicked on share and then share content. And then in the middle there, you got a screen or window.
Well, there we go.
There it is.
Okay, now.
Yep.
Now is official report of high, county highway engineer up there?
Yes.
Okay, good. Then I can, yeah, perfect.
There. Scroll down a little. Yeah, that looks all right, doesn't it? That looks good. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna try and present this. We'll see how it all works out. And if it doesn't work out, we can always do it next week. We're not on a time crunch or anything, so. Okay, very good. Okay, thank you, Derek.
Yep, absolutely.
Oh, like he said, you know, just the tables. I didn't pay that much attention because I was like, I'm not, I just either there was some wrong thought that Mr. Shun had. At, at the end of the day, there's people that can't. And some things don't belong, should be. If it need to be fixed, I don't like it like that.
What's that?
It's terrible, the band.
Oh, yeah. Good night. Yeah, she was hoping I'd do two hours. Just with the different setup.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I was up till almost four a.m. Offense therapy yesterday at the end. So, so this is working on tearing all that apart so that I can get the part today to be able to put it back together. A short night.
Coffee's for, right?
Don't drink coffee.
That's right, you don't drink coffee. I don't either.
So far, holding my own, I need some water here a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said, well, shit. For the hay racks. Yeah, well, yeah, had it written, yeah, so I'll call the chat when it gets ready. My job's up here. Real good day, Joe, too. Beautiful day. Mine did, I guess he had some people.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, well, that lead, that lead very important past. That's been your.
The county demographic. Who, who is the left party? I mean, he obviously looked at the bike district just as a story, story. Not even that show, or it was it was prior to the Democratic district, and now there's twice as many Republicans. I didn't, yeah. I didn't buy it so. I know.
I said, well, who's gonna tell that guy?
You know, I, I, I just wanted to supervise. I don't want my picture right between the two. That's why I thought it was probably helping the campaign for, for, not anything. Having supervisor put through right by big statue of Bill White. He didn't need to see that, all that. Right where everybody wants to buy it too. Yeah, that, that was pretty bold. But I'm, there's only five there. I don't know. I definitely ever saw one guy sit there, right? I think of Larry Neves. Sits there a lot, but he's, he represents it very good. Very well, it's okay, but you know. No, I, I need to look. That was interesting. Yeah, there's. I, I went wild, but I mean, there, there was a one person there. Very different dynamic. Okay.
Yeah.
Go look at the calendar.
September.
Well, we have a special election September thirteenth.
For?
The Algonquin.
Oh, right.
So we have that coming up first, so uh right now we're kind of focused on those dates, so um.
So where are they going to be after that?
I'd have to look to see. I cannot remember up to time.
Sure, I don't know if people can start sending that to me.
Yeah, you can't send them in yet. Um request forms. Well, for the special, but I'd have to look at for the regular, because right now we're focused on that. So uh yeah, because.
Send people from both districts that vote.
We have thirteen thirteen precincts that it affects because Algonquin goes all the way up north to take all the way over to.
Right.
And all the way over to Bittermore, so it's most of our precincts.
Yeah, yeah. We had to wait signatures for it.
Did you?
Like, didn't see it the other day.
Really?
But it took forever to get the signatures they needed.
To consolidate.
The one where it's, yeah, the one where people were going to like use stopping the door to go into the bar or something to try and get signatures.
There's there's three public measures on it, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I I don't know if anybody will show up to go away for. But.
I just don't, I just know that after next year, that will be our problem city.
It won't be on by.
Well, well, it's cool. I want school having to take care of that.
Well, if they own it.
They're not using. They're gonna wanna get rid of it some. What are they gonna do with the building? They're gonna do the same thing about the building. Yeah, probably saw them, yeah.
Tommy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna take off at nine thirty and take the boss to the doctor. She ain't feeling very good.
Uh okay, that sounds good. Well, um.
Yeah, so you know.
Yeah, sounds good, Roger. Well, I hope she does, and I hope he's feeling.
Yeah.
You think she has it too?
Well, I know she does. Yes. She tested, but. She's paranoid. She's got all the home tests.
Yeah, me too. I have on my own too. This this for my own. My knowledge, I guess. Well, with their medical conditions, you have to be careful. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you for letting me know. And keep keep us updated. How are you doing?
I will.
Yep, that's it.
All right, it is nine o'clock and uh next item is discussion decision care connections Northern Iowa M H D S salad correction.
Melissa?
Yep.
Sure.
Just a sheet for you. You got yours. Um, I just thought I'd print it out. I'm super visual and so I like to, Donny knows me. Donny knows he gets visuals and pictures, so.
As long as they're large enough.
Yeah, as long as they're large enough. Donny always tells me I need larger. Um, so I think you all know me, but I'm Melissa. I'm the uh CEO of your region Care Connections of Northern Iowa. Um, I'm here for, because I made a mistake, to be honest, um. When uh we had a busy, busy budgeting year this year, and so um when we I sent the paperwork to Tammy to get all the budgets um in salaries this last year, I made a error on my spreadsheet. So when I sent it over to Tammy, I sent it over negative um minus two thousand seventy-five dollars. So when uh we did that and I got for first July paycheck, she says. Um, it looks a little lower than I thought it was going to be, and it was. Um, so after investigating, um I realized that on my, I just did a calculation wrong on my Excel spreadsheet. Um, so I talked about that in here, just the background. So we were under two thousand seventy-five, um two thousand dollars seventy-five cents. Um, what I've done moving forward is I corrected my worksheet, so I've got that calculated. I got it correct. I've sent it over to Tammy, um worked with our physical agent. Tammy has been, I've cussed her with emails and bugged her and apologized um as well, and so she's been wonderful as well back to me. Um, kind of moving forward, um what we've done, just to kind of give you a little backstory, um because of the county levy and the finances this this last year, we changed the whole way that we really have expended or traded money, I'd say, between the counties and the region. Prior, it used to be, you know, you guys raised the levies, um you guys um had it here, and then your auditor treasurer would cut the check to the region um for those funds, whatever we levy. Well, now, since we don't have that, all the money's in the one bank bank account. I always just say it's in the region's piggy bank. Um, and so now that we get state appropriations, um that comes directed to the region, Carmen Mosher, the Palo Alto auditor, deposits that. And then what we do in order to pay our employees, um is that each county that has an employee, so you guys have Anna, and then because we also run the mental health advocate salary through the region, um then we budget for that. And then what we decided to do this last year is then the region, so Carmen sends each county um those payroll expenses. We decided to do it semi-annually, just to make it a little bit less administrative burden, so every six months we get that sent over. Um, so in order to do that, we sent about fifty thousand, a little over fifty thousand, um when we opened up the account when we started out this fiscal year. Um, and so there there is money sitting in Casu. Um, I uh did visit with Carmen, our Palo Alto auditor. I know her and Tammy have worked together. Um, so the money is there in the account um already. Simply what we need to do um is my ask today is to get it corrected um to be able to get that A paid out to Anna, because it was my mistake. Um, and so we need to A get your approval to be able to do that, because it's been posted, it's been um you know, we've gone through all of those, so just need to get that corrected. We have a motion and we have all the proper trail. You guys will will do that today, which I know I would appreciate, and I would appreciate this as well, so.
We just need it for our payroll, because our pay was published in the paper, and the salaries just under that, so we just need to make sure she's at the right level.
Yeah, we make a motion to bring uh to make it uh correct payment amount to Anna Miller.
Okay, motion by supervisor lost to uh correct the salary for the uh for Anna Miller. Is there a second? Second by supervisor secretary. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Do you have a little, I don't know what you guys have on your agenda, and I it's totally, I have a couple of updates on Care Connections. Would you want that information going here, or how are you doing on schedule, or put that through your goods off?
About forty minutes. We've got one between us all. At like nine forty-five is our next item.
Well, we got Doug in there.
Well, there's two more. I mean, there's there's two.
Yeah. We're not doing the.
Yeah, it was just an update. That's that's fine.
All right, um do I have, again, because I have fever, is that fine if I give you a few? I'll give you a few more things that just you guys have as well. So my goal is to get around again with our coordinators, um so that is what I've been doing. Um, and but since I figured I have you guys today, um I thought I'd update you. I'm just where we're at. So what you have in front of you is a six-month um just kind of update on what we've been doing, so you can take that with you. Um, it kind of goes back from October, so this is from October of twenty-one, um kind of up through June. So the first one I'll just talk a little bit about, um mostly that talks about what Care Connections has been up to as far as contracts and things like that. So you know, the region is now contracted with the state of Iowa with DHS for services and how we run our services, so that everything um to the best ability is streamlined across the state with the different regions. Um, so there you can see um on the first page that just talks about, I just pulled a point as a different, maybe um most important parts out of our DHS contract as far as what our deliverables are. Um, and I wanted to just point out what the region, what they've identified for system-wide out goals for the regions are are bulleted here, and they say reduce emergency department usage, improve the use of mobile crisis response, improve jail diversion services, and improve employment outcomes. So you'll see our services really, we have a lot of services, but you'll really see that kind of hone in and and wrap around those areas. And that's what we're really working on as far as um kind of our our main strategic goals as we're moving forward. Um, and so we're we're on to go and start with that, because you know, we have our mobile crisis, we're working on our employment services. Um, you know, I it's exciting to say, because I think everyone may do it in the year. Uh, if not, I talked about it just in a in a couple minutes here, but we did grants um back in June. And so we did the impact, community impact grants, and so um you'll, they're listed, jumping ahead, but they're all listed on page six of this packet, and you'll see in there that Algonquin Police Department got about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and nine. And that is for a community and law enforcement, mental health liaison. Um, and so you guys may know more about that even than I do at this point, but I know that they're working through that, and that's gonna be really exciting endeavors, um to be able to see how it's kind of a new thing. Um, where I don't even wanna necessarily say we're piloting it, we're creating something that's never been, that that's never been here before. Um, but the nice thing is is that there's other models across the state um with other law enforcement, and so Casusa is gonna be able to have a rare opportunity to do something that is um really, really important in the community. And so what the community needs, they'll be able to shift that, they'll be able to mold that position to what we need. So I'm really excited to to see what that becomes and to be part of those groups um moving forward with that. So that's one way, you know, that's just another way looking ahead with those funds, to be able to support those endeavors, to increase jail diversion, to work towards that mobile crisis. Again, we have some services in here, but um we have services in the community, but to help tie those together and to treat my folks as well. Um, just kind of skipping on, um page two talks about the access standard, so you're gonna see bulleted throughout that area. That's what the region is responsible to meet access for. So when they say like um mobile response, that we need to be able to meet that within the access standard. And so the state says, um tells us what that access standard is. Um, and so each service is a little bit different, but anywhere between um a hundred and twenty miles of a referral that they'd be able to access those services or a hundred and twenty minutes. So um we're really working towards um all of the services and getting them in the right locations where we need. Uh, page three um just talks about, that's kind of going into February, March, and April, got really busy. It's the budgeting budgeting season, as you guys all were as well. Um, so talk about um where we were as far as some of those services. Um, I'm excited to say that in March, um community-based um crisis services started in Clay, Palo Alto, and Oseola counties. Um, and I'm telling you guys that for a reason, is that you guys started, um Casusa started that service with Irelie Ball with the Mobile Crisis July of twenty twenty-one. So um Casusa County, Irelie Ball was the only accredited provider, um the first accredited provider across the state. And so we shared that team with C I C S, um and it's actually really good for us, because we can share the cost of those teams rather than costing Casusa County the full amount. We can split those teams up and share those. So um Casusa County was one of the first counties across the state that was able to use community-based crisis stabilization services. Um, so that's really exciting. That's that's really neat, and Irelie Ball has been one that other agencies have looked to. Example, Season Center kind of worked with them to work towards building up their program and things like that. So I always think that's neat to be first and to be able to see how that works, and I'm excited to share that Casusa was one of those counties that was able to do that. In April, we started the grant, so you'll see um right there on the bottom of page three, um the six areas that we targeted our grant dollars to. So we did um a round of grants. We had agencies could apply for up to three, if they could do up to three applications for up to three hundred thousand dollars each, as long as they targeted these six areas. So that included improving access to mental health care for adults, for children, um evidence-based practices, so that's therapeutic practices, accessibility and facility improvements, services for people with mental illness that were homeless, and then work for shortages, work for shortage strategies. So on top of it, you can see that these six areas also kind of go back to that first page, talking about how we're gonna build up our services and our providers and how that relates back to our our overall goals and contracts. Let me just stop for a second, because I've shared a lot so far. Any questions up to this point? Um, so then I'm on the bottom of page three. Um, in April, uh we have, you'll see um a couple pictures here, and some of you guys were there as well, and I appreciate that, um you guys all came to that training that we had, the Board of Supervisors training. Um, so we shared, we shared that in April to kind of um provide some additional updates and services to our county. April was a busy training month, because at the very end of April, we were able to um do our solution point training with the crisis cops. Um, that's Joe and um Jesse, and they are um we brought him up here, and we had a great turnout for that. We had it at the Conservation, um.
Nature Center.
Sorry, the word escaped me. Had it at the Nature Center. It was a beautiful location. Um, they, I'll be honest, they got, I was looking at their Facebook page afterwards. He got a great picture with the buffalo. They thought that was just, they said this was one of the nicest locations I've ever been to. They said, what a great place to do training and get to look out at the lake at the same time. So um that was well attended. I think we had about thirty-seven to forty officers um attend that. Uh, and so they were from this region. We had a couple from Humboldt, Pocahontas that attended. Um, our surveys came back, we shared those with our board, great surveys, great feedback. Um, and this was just kind of um giving them a taste of what um some additional training we would like them to take, which is um crisis intervention training. And that's a forty-hour law enforcement training that teaches them um how to de-escalate situations and things like that. So this was the idea to get them to um get law enforcement to understand the concept of what they're trying to do, um show them. They also have a documentary um on HBO, and so they screened that and were able to answer questions about how they do law enforcement. Um, our region is scheduled in October of next year to have these trainers come up um in our region, um because they are scheduled across the state. So there's a regional, there's a statewide contract with these gentlemen to teach um trainings across the whole state. So they'll teach nine across the state every year, and then they'll do three at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. So the officers coming um right out of the academy will have this training as well, and then the goal is to get all of our other officers trained um on that as well. So that's really exciting. That's it. And again, that falls back to that first page on jail diversion and and working, um making sure that we're doing. In May, um again, fought working on um following in line with those legislative um fund balances. We, a big thing we did is we had um where our fund balance was, we wanted, as we were doing our grants, we wanted to make sure that our core services were um implanted and embedded first. So one of the big areas um that we saw was community-based, or I'm sorry, crisis residential, um a residential-based program. And so that's where someone that's in a crisis um can stay in a residential um facility for anywhere from three to five days, work on, have supervision, get their meds readjusted, um kind of work through whatever that crisis is, but they don't need an inpatient hospitalization for that. Um, and so we have a couple facilities that we've contracted with, um but really thought the idea of getting it closer to home would be better. Um, the facilities that we were contracting with, um the closest to us was either was this area of SAC City, and then there was one in Sioux City, and then there's one in Water. Um, and so um we, as I've shared probably in the past, we've worked hard um to look into the Fort Dodge area to see if that was an option that's just never really panned out. Um, and so we decided that uh we would entertain with us, who was working towards this as well, the region to the west of us really wanting this. And um I don't wanna necessarily put out there, but I think they're gonna go with or without us, and so it seemed like a better idea to join along um and be able to um have that in our region. So and with uh Season Center being Spencer, they were interested in this proposal. Um, and so they did uh write a proposal for that, and we did visit with them through that, and so we worked on that with Sioux Rivers, with our board. Um, and so we have the board granted uh two million dollars to Season Center to work towards that. Um, so it's a pretty big project. Um, the idea is that they will be open in January of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, sorry, that would be fast. Um, knock on wood, because we know how construction and everything is, but um the main area that they're doing is they're downstairs. Um, they're taking half of their downstairs, what's right now, and they're gonna make that into some, they're gonna put two residential rooms in there, and then they're also gonna have two observation areas. So that's more of like a recliner and TV kind of sitting area with staff and a nursing station, things like that. And then while they're there, they'll be able to have an evaluation and assessment, they'll be able to have nursing care, psychiatric care, some peer support services. They'll have their, if they're in the residential part of it, they'll have their own room with shower facilities, things like that, and then work on some intensive discharging, things like that. The idea behind this as well, which is awesome, is that they're gonna be housed right next to Spencer Hospital that has their, that has a mental health unit, so at any time that individual needs a higher level of care, we can work towards that with them. Um, Season Center has also worked with the hospital to help staff when they need the R Ns to be able to kind of flow in between that. Um, a huge other thing that seems minor in some areas, but even having a hospital available right next door to be able to get the meals and the food, that's a big deal, um rather than having to house it inhabitants. So um it's it's really kind of an exciting thing. We're working on that right now, getting lots of updates. So um just be on the lookout for that. When we get more information, we'll be sharing that. Um, so with that, so uh and then the rest of it, then we still had some remaining dollars, then that's what we did the grants to as well. So um I I skipped ahead, I'm sorry. Page five just has all the contracts of our regions, just so you guys are aware of who we contract with. This, and I'll be honest with you, this is not all inclusive. If we have maybe one or two, um we pay a lot more, we have a lot more vendors than we have contracts. We don't necessarily have a contract with everyone that we pay. And then, I'm sorry, now, page six, that's the list of all of the grants that we've had. So you can see, um our goal was to grant a million dollars. We hit one point one. We had twenty-three agencies ask for funding. Um, the amount requested was a little over four million dollars, four point one million. Um, and so we um we didn't grant about three million dollars of that, but it's exciting because we hit all the goals. Um, our goals were very aggressive, but we hit them, so that was exciting. And then the last page we have is just special project request. So the region gets some interesting requests sometimes, and so we just had a way. Um, we set up a method where we just call a special project request, and so uh gonna be an example of those. Um, here's a great one, Palo Alto Hospital. We just had one for them, um mental health first aid training book. So um we have an area as far as prevention and um and training and things like that. So for the region to be able to partner up with providers who offer supports, whether that's training, uh whether that's our coordinator services, whether that's funding for trainings, what, you know, being a partner in that. Um, so that's one thing we've been able to do through some of our shelters, help with therapy supplies, um working um towards helps Horizons and Emmitsburg Trains, like a transport vehicle for clients, and then Season Center working on um respite, school-based services. And then our our just latest one that's not on here, um because it was approved last month, our board um approved through Palo Alto Hospital. They are going to have a speaker. Um, it's gonna come to six of our counties. Um, and it is a gentleman, but that's from the movie McFarlane USA. He's an inspirational speaker, and he's gonna be coming to Palo Alto Hospital, um got it all set up with using funds for Care Connections. They're gonna have um the speaker go to the middle schools and the high school. Every superintendent was contacted to be able to talk towards mental health and services and things like that. So um and that's a program that's again going to be in all of our schools um this this next fall. So that's really exciting as well. So that's just another, I guess, avenue of how we use those requests um that providers, if they have something that's interesting and worthwhile, they can write to us and our board. We take it in front of the board, and the board can review and discuss, and our board originally, the ask was just the one county, and our board, I think, um is is really fair in those ways. They say if we're gonna do it for one, we really need to do it for all. And so that proposal became expanded, but now we really have, thank goodness for the board's attitude, because of that, we now have it spread, and it's gonna reach a lot more people. So um anyway, and then on the very last, I just have the update of all of our staff there and our phone numbers and our email addresses. So um we just always wanna be available. If anytime you have questions, comments, concerns, we are here. Um, and we're we're working. Um, it's been busy. Casusa's a busy county. Um, I know Anna's um here and Sandy's here and have been busy. It's been hopping, and uh yeah, there's always always something, and we see a lot of needs in Casusa County, and we're we've been really doing our best to be responsive to all of those, so. Thank you for having me today and any questions. I'm happy to.
Do you have the date yet on that speaker?
I don't have them yet. Um, it's probably in my email, or I don't know if it's being worked out, which days are gonna be and what yet. She's sending me a list. Hopefully next week she's getting those dates covered. So we just added on a school.
Right.
So. Of course, yeah, wanted to add that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you for coming over. And I'm gonna go hit the female, because that's why.
There you go.
I always have a best. Explore your downtown a little bit. Thank you for being easy to work. Yeah, thank you for being easy to work. She's wonderful. I appreciate her. Thank you.
Hey, Doug, looks like you're gonna give us the official county highway engineer report. Are you doing this, Doug? Oh, is that Miller's gonna do? Okay, Doug, Miller.
Yeah, good morning. I just had a little bit of a uh I lost connection there for a little bit, so can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, you're fine.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Uh, let's see. And I'm hoping that right now.
Yep, it's up there.
The official report of the highway uh county highway engineer.
Yep.
Uh, just a reminder, this is a uh requirement from uh the Code of Iowa to report uh this to the to the D O T on an annual basis. We do have a uh date. It's supposed to be submitted by September fifteenth. So this, you should have this as well in your your folder there in your drive. You should have that, this file. I'll go over it kind of quickly, and if anybody has any questions at the end, we can uh address those. So we have the title sheet. Uh, sheet two is a financial sheet. You can see at the beginning of the year, we had an auditor's balance of nine million seven hundred two thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. We had receipt of ten million dollars, three hundred sixty, ten million three hundred fifty-seven, one hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. So our total funds that we are accountable for are twenty thousand six, twenty million sixty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Uh, for expenditures in the uh engineering and administration, we had eight hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Construction, we had one million two hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-six cents. Roadway maintenance is four million six hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. And then our general roadway expenditures was two million seven hundred fourteen thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. So our total expenditures amounted to nine million four hundred eight thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, on July, June thirty of this year, we had balances that were obligated for operations of two million eight hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. For construction, we had four million two hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. So our total obligated money was seven million fifty-five thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents, leaving us an obligated balance of three million six hundred five thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and nineteen cents. Our actual ending balance, according to the auditor, was ten million uh six hundred sixty thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Our total funds accounted for was at twenty million sixty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents, which is the equals the same amount uh that we had at the beginning of the sheet. Sheet three is our receipts to the secondary road department. You can see from rule basic, we received two million one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. That was a levy rate of one dollar eighty-one cents. That was a levy rate of $1.81, 82 cents per thousand. General basic, we received $258,882.76. That was with the maximum amount that we can have, which is 16 seventeenths cents per thousand. We also received local option sales tax, $500,000. Road use tax that we received, we received regular road use tax of $6,551,903.83. Time 21 funds, we received $815,938.86. And then city farm market extension funds, we received $36,125.37. We did receive some tax refunds with utilities and fuel and those amounted to $10,264.50. We had some miscellaneous receipts which added up to be $80,828.31. A lot of that is drainage and gravel pit leases and field entrances that we construct. That's what makes up a majority of that miscellaneous. So our total receipts, which was reported on that previous sheet as well, was $10,367,133.39. And that bottom portion is miscellaneous receipts that are itemized a little bit. Then going over some expenses, administration and engineering that was reported on sheet one. I'm not going to go over these again, but it does show that in a little more detail. If the board would like to review that, if you have any questions, we did have some reimbursements. This would be things like copy fees, some of the work that we had to do to analyze bridges for heavy loads. Where the people getting the permits paid for it. So we were reimbursed for some consultants and work that we did as well, inspecting roads under the road use agreements with the wind farms. Construction costs, again, that was reported on the first sheet and I'll just go ahead and not go over that again in detail. If the board has questions, they can ask. Roadway maintenance, bridges and culverts, the details are here again. Roads, expenses on the roads, roadway maintenance, traffic control, road clearing are there. General roadway expenditures again are, are listed and they were summarized on the first sheet. This is new equipment, equipment operations, tools, and then real estate and buildings. We do not have any indebtedness. So sheet nine has nothing on that. The locally funded projects, this is a summary of construction dollars spent on projects. For example, this sheet 10-1, the project is that's 771200, which is the four-way bridge. We did pay for stockpiled materials. If you look at the remarks, the payment is for stockpile, stockpile materials and construction is going to be in 2023 fiscal year, 2023. The second project listed is the project going on over at or excuse me, the project that was constructed, it's the Arton Road resurfacing. You can see the remarks. The construction is complete. We have not paid final on that. This is with the construction in Norris who had that smoothness issue on the east side of B-58. We have not paid for these projects completely yet. We're retaining things until all that is taken care of. The third project listed, 982106, this would be south of Lead Yard, about a half a mile south of Highway 9169. This project was completed and final payment was made on that. The fourth project is a little bit of project for this year. This would be down east of Laverne. We did pay some mobilization per Iowa Department of Transportation specification. We paid $9,000 on that project. And then finally, I think this is the last one, the fifth page, this is the project over on the Fairville Road. And it's a reconstruction project and that was what was paid in fiscal year 2022. And then the Gold Eagle project, the lane widening, we did pay some local funds on that. A majority of that was paid by the TIF increment financing. But that is completed and payment, final payment has been made. Sheet 11 is road and street equipment inventory. So this is an inventory of the equipment that we have on the road department. And if you do see a yes in column used on a project this fiscal year, that was for calculating day labor. So for just a example, I'm looking at this equipment number 4050. It's a tandem truck and we did use that when we were doing some work, probably filling in that box over south of Lead Yard. So that's all of our equipment expenditures that went towards secondary roads that were not accounted for through the secondary road fund. Rural basic had $14,250.20. This was the TIF, the increment financing money that went towards that Gold Eagle lane modification. And then as I've done in all the previous years, general basic estimated $150,000 of liability insurance that gets paid for that is for equipment, insurance, property insurance that the road department has. And I divide those up a little bit through administration and engineering, construction. All of the $14,250 went to construction and I divide everything up. So we had a total expenditures that were not coming through the county road, secondary road department fund of $164,250.20. The next sheet is the local effort. Just a reminder, we are to by law get 75% of our actual opportunity to get money. We need to get 75% of that in order to retain and receive our farm market and road use tax funds. So the tabulation of actual receipts, again, we received our $2,113,000 rural basic, $258,882 from general basic, giving us total tax receipts, property tax receipts Local option sales tax deposited directly to secondary road, that was $500,000. And then the other funds provided for secondary road purposes from sheet 12, the previous sheet was $164,250. So our total local receipts going towards that actual receipts, local actual receipts was $3,036,322.72. The cap calculation of maximum revenue potential. If we took all of our property value and multiplied it by the 16 and 7/8 cents per thousand property value, we would have $259,020. If we took the rural property and multiplied it by the $3.38 per thousand, that gives us $3,489,349.11. So our total revenue potential was $3,748, $3,748,369. To see whether we comply or not, we take the 75% of the minimum requirement, which is $2,811,276.88. What we actually had was $3,036,322.72. Our effort percentage is 81%, which is greater than 75%. So we comply with the code section 312. And then sheet 14 is final costs for projects that have been final. The LFM, this is the Gold Eagle turn modification, turn lane modification. The final cost for that ended up being $471,642.88. And then the project, the box culvert replacement project south of Lead Yard, the actual cost on that to the contractor, we paid $134,388. And we had day labor, which would be our material, some culvert pipe that went with that project, some fill, some gravel, some building material, our equipment costs and our labor costs. We had $8,900 for that. So our total cost for that project ended up being And then we have some notes and that finishes up the DOT report. Along with the DOT report, I give the road fund fiscal year report, which is a lot of similarities. However, the DOT does allow receipts to be reimbursed to, to different portions of expenditures. Where on the county side, we budget so much money for expenditures, we cannot go over it. So this is more just showing money spent versus money received. Again, I'll just kind of summarize this. If the board has questions, they can certainly ask those questions sometime if you'd like in my office or after this presentation. Administration, so this is a summary of expenditures, this first page. Engineering and administration, we spent $848,170 on that, about 8.79% of the total money expended. On construction, we had $1,222,555.5, that's 12%, almost 13% of the money expended. Roadway maintenance was $4,774,871, almost half, 49.5. And general roadway, $2,799,321. That was about 29%. So our net expenditures were $9,644,918.59. Page two of this secondary road report is, takes into consideration the balance, a beginning balance, ending balance, receipts, and then the bottom will be expenditures. But property taxes, we received $2,372,72.52. Local option sales tax, we received $500,000. Road use tax, we received $7,403,968. And then our miscellaneous receipts were $327,051.92. So our total receipts add enough to be $10,603,092.50. The total receipts plus the beginning balance amounted to $20,305. Excuse me, $20,305,847.41. We issued $9,644,918.59 in warrants, which comes from that second page. So our auditor allowance was $10,660,928.82. We had obligated expenditures, July 1 of 2022, and I'll go over those, this next sheet of $7,55,955.63, giving us an obligated balance of $3,605,833.19. Here is a list of the obligated expenses. We have we had our payroll and claims which amounted to $416,213.38. Construction projects that are, we have contracts signed and this would be the money that is due on those. And that amount is $4,233,752.30. Maintenance projects, we had spraying, painting, gravel crushing. And then our seal coat work, which amounts to $1,354,325.950. And then equipment, we have three maintainers and one pickup that we have ordered and not paid for, but the amount to be paid for is $1,050,804.45. So that is the total obligated. And then I also include on this sheet four, our status of our farm to market fund. I'm just going to go through the summary at the top. The, the revenue and the expenditures are listed at the bottom and which quarter that they happened. But our beginning balance, July 1 of 2021 was $676,869.35. That's a negative number. We had received $3,154, excuse me, $3,154,455.44. And dispersments of $5,157,546.33, leaving us an ending balance of $2,679,960.24. We have obligated $4.5 million worth of work. And so our obligated balance is $7 million in the whole. We will have more projects coming up, but we, I guess, have always operated with that money. They allow us to borrow ahead and we've always borrowed ahead with the farm to market fund. And then the last sheet on this is the motion by the board of supervisors to accept the report. And I'll stop sharing at this time.
Okay. All right. We need a motion then to accept the, this is kind of a report of county highway engineer for fiscal year 2022.
Yeah, Doug, excuse me, Jack, Doug Crouch should.
Yep, we got it.
You've got it? Good. Okay, thank you.
There are motion to accept the report. Motion by supervisor Casey. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by supervisor Los. Any discussion? We'll call a vote, please.
Second.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Los.
Yes.
Los.
Yes.
Roger, I'm guessing you've left already.
I'm sorry. Roger, you still on?
He said he was leaving at 9:30, so.
So, so it's up there. He's still on.
Yeah. Roger, can you hear me?
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.